Hey, we are recording. Let's say that right there.
All right. All right, then let's do six oh four call to order. All right, any public comments?
Um, so I'm here for two things today.
Okay.
Um, I am actually here to offer a public comment on behalf of the Lincolnville Education Association. First off, I wanted to know, it's a first thing. So first off, Kate, is this your last?
For Lincolnville.
For Lincolnville, so.
And Emily.
I know.
Oh.
I'll get her.
Who forgot?
Kate, uh, thank you for your service here. I'm sure it is exciting and also, uh, well, every adventure has a little bit of, you know, a little comprehensive. So, um, so thank you very much for all the help for our school and for what's going on. Um, it has been an adventure. It had, there are many challenges, um, but we appreciate your worship and wish you well on your next adventure. Uh, speaking of thanks. Emily, um, thank you for serving, um, on our school committee. Uh, it's been really wonderful. Most of the time we're tuning in via that screen and you probably don't know that we're even listening in. Um, you know, no. Um, so anyway, I just, we just wanted to say thank you for offering your good time to, it's not really a cause, but it's what it is in a way. Um, and on that note, all the rest of you who are giving, who are giving, um, your time to this, which is really a volunteer effort. Um, and service to this community made huge contributions, don't worry. I know, yeah, it's okay. That's another thing I've got to give. Um, so yous have made, you all make amazing contributions. We don't, as humans, spend enough time probably being grateful. Um, and always features part of our rock and find what's around to fix it. And so you might hear a lot from us about what's wrong and what needs to be fixed. And if it doesn't make them feel grateful, appreciate you and care about you very much. That's, so thank you very much. Um, speaking of thanks, we're going to give a dance thanks to this guy here who's our next superintendent. So, um, you know, a letter of welcome from the Lincolnville Education Association. Who's you, um, and wish you well and we look forward to celebrating.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, that's a way to start a meeting.
Nice.
Any other public comment?
Anybody online, anybody online?
All right. Next, any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, no. The only thing I would say is Tom Seekins is coming at six thirty. So if not done.
Okay.
But that's just the shuffling of things.
Uh, next, business office. So signing of the warrant, AP warrants are here and it looks like we've already signed. Uh, financial report.
Uh, we are right on target, a little bit ahead actually in revenue still, uh, because this, as of this report, I had not received receipt from the town that we received last month subsidy, but I'm sure we have. So it's not accounted for though, and without it, we're at ninety-one percent, target's ninety-two percent. Overall for expenditures, we're at seventy-five percent, which is, uh, right where I expect to be because we are going to accrue next month. Or this, at the end of this month, July and August salaries.
All at once.
Yeah.
Hey, I do have an adjustment to the agenda, I'm sorry.
Can we finish this first and then do that?
Yes.
Yeah. Make note. I'm putting a star so we don't forget, all right.
That's all I have.
And, uh, I think it was brought up at the town meeting, so the audits are still with.
They're with the auditors.
Auditors, but we haven't received the final report yet. I think there was a clear, there was like an email of clarification, so I just want to make sure.
Already received the draft, but I had Appleton in my mind.
Okay.
Uh, so no, it's the twenty-three Lincolnville audit is with the auditors. We have not received them.
Okay, that's twenty-three into twenty-four.
No, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two. Oh, right, because, okay. Okay. And they won't take the next one because they have to know the prior years before they can even do the next years, right?
Well, they won't take the next one, even when they've finished this one, they won't schedule the next one because they have other schools they have to do first.
Do we have any abilities to talk to the town manager about, like, well, I guess they've already started the town's audit for twenty-three, twenty-four, so we really can't switch auditors.
Because they.
The town's, not ours.
Usually can't finish the town until they finish us. So if they.
But don't usually start the towns, though?
I, I don't know that they've finished twenty-three for the town yet because they haven't finished us for the town and it's one combined audit because we're a municipal department of the district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I, the auditors have not told us, they told us they actually couldn't give us a date to start twenty-four. Um, so I would be surprised if they started at the town and we haven't heard anything. Did you hear that they did, that they'd had?
No, 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 I was just wondering if, because they usually will try to get their piece of it done, regardless of what's happening with ours. And I didn't know if they had tried to.
No, they're.
Do that, even though ours wasn't done.
That's by knowledge, they haven't.
Okay.
But we can.
I wonder if it's worthwhile asking Dave of like, seeing if there's a different auditor available. I mean, I don't know that there's a whole lot of options, but if the other town uses a different auditor and theirs is done.
Is it the same as Appleton's or different?
No, Appleton has a different auditor and Appleton has started twenty-four.
Right.
Yeah, it might be worth seeing if the town has to consider a different.
Sure.
Auditor if they have their stuff done and we have our stuff done and we could hand it to a different auditor while.
Yeah, we do have that conversation every once in a while, um, so we can circle back with Dave.
On that, or would that be you or?
Steph and I.
Or Steph? Someone, sorry.
No, it'll, yeah.
Excellent. Well, that would be awesome. The town would be super excited. To have that.
It'd be nice to have it done.
Yeah.
For sure.
Any other questions? When is our, we have voting coming up for the actual school budget?
June tenth is an eight AM to eight PM ballot vote at the town hall. And we do need everybody to come out and vote. Um, that is a yes, no, down or up, support or not support the school budget.
Of the.
At the town hall and not here?
The voting.
It's the voter.
Is here, you're right, I'm sorry, thank you, because the different towns do different things, so I apologize, I think it's here.
In our gym, the school is usually, yeah. All right, anything else for budget finance?
It's nice to see it, uh, around her.
I know, right? Right. And we don't anticipate the next two months of payrolls are going to put us over.
Uh, not unless there's something I'm not aware of.
Okay. Not that you can like know a hundred percent, but like projected of what salaries are and stuff, it should.
No, and in fact, with, uh, Lincolnville specifically, I spent a lot of time looking at each individual line where there was something that looked a little off this time. Um, and I did a little more cleanup and, I mean, no.
Knock up more than that.
I can't.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'd be really surprised if something wacky happens, not that.
Now you said it, Steph.
I know, that's why I was saying. Anticipated versus not, like, there's nothing that we would anticipate throwing it off at this moment.
No, and if, I mean, if like, we had some big expense that I was aware of, that suddenly needed to be tended to, then I would have accrued it, so it would still shown as an expense. So, yeah.
All right.
So, in terms of adjustment.
Did, did, were we all, I know, you're really ready to forget. I, I literally have it starred, I promise you. And did anybody else have any questions about the financials or anything? That's all right. All right, what would you like to make for adjustments?
Item eight has various positions that we need to create. Um, Justin and I were able to meet with Angela after that email she sent out. And so we would like you to create a point four food service aid position as well. And we do have the funding for that, we have figured that out.
So we'll call it eight A will be, vote for point four food services.
Food service aid is the name of the position.
Then we can discuss further when we get there, all right? Anything else? No. I know, I was looking at you.
I'll keep going about shit.
All right, next, uh, vote to accept the minutes of the May fifth, twenty twenty-five regular school committee meeting. Any questions, edit? Thing that.
Looks, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May fifth.
All right, all in favor? That would be all five. All right, next up, we have student staff presentation of student leadership.
Hi there, uh, I'm John Henry, thanks to know that. Um, and I, I have me here all wonderful eighth grade students, who want to introduce her. Um, I'm going to give you a little bit of background about the student leadership committee, just so you are aware of exactly what it is. Um, and then, um, she's going to share her accomplishments, which, uh, thanks for inviting us, by the way, to come and talk about this. Um, so first off, I want you to know the student leadership committee, we refer to it as the SLC, because you have to have a background, right? Um, was actually formed in twenty twenty-three and it was born out of an idea by sixth grade students, our current eighth graders, actually. He said, we like, want to change the times, we'd like to do some things, how can we make our school better? And so, uh, in my classroom, at the end of their sixth grade year, they did a brainstorming session. Um, and, uh, the student leadership committee was formed. Uh, so that, that following fall, uh, we, we began the ground running. So this is the second school year that members have been selected by their peers. So they're selected through an application process that's blind, they don't know who the person is, uh, that is applying. Um, and nine students each trimester serve, so twenty-seven kids a year. There are three students from the sixth grade, three from the seventh grade and three from the eighth grade who are chosen. Their goals, these are the goals that they wrote two years ago, which they're currently in the process of looking at. Very proud of them. Um, so their goals are to learn about leadership and good citizenship and promote them inside and outside of the school. To show pride within their school by making examples, uh, of people who keep the school clean, organized, make it a safe and happy place. Uh, to improve, uh, school spirit and their sense of community. To improve communication with students, teachers and outside of the walls of LCS. To give and collect information and feedback from students, uh, about how to make our school the best it can be. Including classrooms, hallways, lunchroom, buses, outside, inside, you name it, um, even on the sports field. Uh, and then finally, their last goal is to, uh, provide opportunities for students to lead learning, to plan activities and presentations for students, teachers, and the school committee. Okay, hi, my name is Dea, I'm one of the eighth grade SLC members. And some of the stuff that we've done so far, first of all. Uh, in the last two years that SLC has arrived. Um, we have helped plan spirit week for, you know, school, our school spirit. You gotta have school spirit, guys. And the Rena dorm, for all those brains, for all of the middle school, which implement school, middle education. The SLC, uh, has worked to update our address code, so you can wear fun stuff later, whatever. Um, and we have even planted a main native botanical garden. They're preventing that, yeah. The botanical garden and front of the school, which is the other. How's about that, huh? Good for the lungs, for breathing, yeah. Um, we also created videos for the search on kindness, because very nice to do, be kind and respectful to others. Big thing. Uh, working with all of the, the LCS students to create a positive tree. We made one and it was great, it's beautiful. Highly recommended. Um, and well, you, it's about what we love about the school, which honestly is everything in the school that I love. And all of that, yeah, a little bit, but I love it. Um, we also have worked with Mr. Bennett on Q and A sessions with the middle school, all sixth, seventh and eighth grade students. Um, we also work on our safety precautions because it's important, we all have to save it. Since we value the safety of all our new students and staff. Thanks, we love you. Yeah. Um, and, you know, we just have a bunch of amazing teachers that we all appreciate for our day ahead for us. I'm not trying to keep track of them.
It's okay.
Um, we are, uh, we also have the drama club, which was a new activity option, which, we have a lot of talented kids, so it's great. I, I know a lot of my friends go out to get it and they were just, they kind of outplayed, so. Next. Thank you. Um, we are also revamping, revamping the field day for middle school students as well as recognition for LCS students that are graduating from high school, that they're wanting to walk down the halls and you get them home here instead of. It'd be great, going down memory lane, who doesn't want that? Um, we also have kids of friends who are amazing lovely teachers. And staff and obviously, we love all, thank God, everybody. We, we, we made sure we went, we went down with this, with handwritten notes, our friend, yes, my friend still heard from writing those. And it's mostly late, but maybe cards for all the staff, so we love them. Um, and we are talking about how we can organize the MLC next year to get more students involved in leadership and service for our school community, because it's very important, because we love our community and our family. And basically, school is family, so same thing. Um, and one of our top priorities is to help all our students reach their absolute best because they're, they need a chance to grow. So, that's all. That's all.
That is amazing. I am so glad that you guys came to be able to talk about this because it really is so amazing to feel how our middle schools are getting empowered to know that you can make a difference, that you can have an impact in your school, in your community. And just trying to make the place a little bit better, like writing handwritten notes to your teachers and staff is wonderful. At the same time as trying to boost your fellow students up, I, I just, I love it.
She was a good choice, don't you think?
I think so, yes, well done, well done.
It was a good fit. So I don't think you have to have any questions or that kind of gives you a good insight and tell me about you, but.
That's terrific, I'm excited to get to hear about all the things we have accomplished. I like having this topic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, definitely.
Thank you very much.
Well done, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
That's great.
Um, all right, that was like, this is like the best start to a meeting ever. Uh, next is resignation nominations.
Uh, we have none.
Okay.
Uh, to date, we did hire a, um, ed tech, that's not something you guys vote on, but just so you're aware, we have somebody in that. Uh, actually, um, we had, we did have a, a resignation, one of the ed techs, um, retired, uh, Beyond Lin, another one decided to retire, um, Michelle Prosser, who was very valued and did an absolute wonderful job for us for the last couple of years. So, um, actually, we switched this new person into Michelle's position. And if I could tell you her name, I would, but, um, I don't have it at the tip of my tongue. Um, so we're good there, um, but in terms of what you guys need to vote on or anything like that, we've had, now staff is steady and staying where they are, thank goodness.
Yay. All right, next is eight. So we'll do the first vote on the interventionist person and we'll do the food services app second.
So the food service, I mean, excuse me, you know, so we'll start with the food service and then, sorry, Tracy. Um, the, we are asking the school committee to reduce the point five title one position. And that is to make room to create a one point zero FTE, um, title one position. The data shows us that we really need math as well as literacy intervention. And that we need intervention at grades three to five, really, and maybe some of the middle school, but, um, uh, the kids get a lot of intervention in the K to two team because of the way they have things set up and then that kind of falls off. And, um, so, uh, we had put in the budget a, an ed tech position to do that. But as we've been looking at what's required by the federal government for the grant and all the paperwork and all the, um, community back and forth that's needed. And then what's needed by the teachers and how much interaction you can do when you're not here the whole day. We really thought the best use of that chunk of funds would be to do a full-time position.
Instead of the ed tech.
Yes.
And instead of a halftime, Lord kind of mer, the funding would kind of not fully get marched because there's still ESBA.
There's fifty thousand in title one money, which, uh, um, plus thirty-eight thousand, three eighty-six in salary and additional twelve thousand in insurance benefits. That's held right now in the budget for the ed tech. So those funds are what we would use to fund this position.
Did that come out to be fairly neutral?
It depends on who you hire, right, whether they need insurance, where they fall on the scale, so.
But it's in the same ballpark, I mean, we're not talking like.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to be fifty thousand dollars short no matter what. What's happening?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just going to go get rid of it, I'll be, I'm very sorry.
We don't want the tick in here, so we're happy to have that.
Happy to have you going.
Yeah.
So that, um, so the first order of business there is to vote to reduce the title, the point five title one interventionist position.
I think it's also just important to say for people here and on Zoom, we did discuss this with Karen and that greater length in executive session last meeting.
There's also, um, provisions in the contract that we followed.
Did we get any feedback from LEA on reduction force or do we, do they just get notified?
Well, Justin had discussion.
Yeah.
Yep, and then we did notify them.
Anything I should say that would, yeah.
I, I think everyone could see the logic of the plan and understand. You know, I mean, it's not great anytime there's someone in a position, obviously.
Right, very, very.
Not the best situation, but it is necessary and this is how we need to do it.
Okay.
And of course, that person's, anybody's welcome to apply, it's not like.
Correct, no, I know, yeah, 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 I just didn't know. Since there's like a notification, sometimes we get feedback on, well, here's I thought it, so, yeah.
Yep.
All right. Now that we're all back tick free. Uh, anybody want to make a motion to do a reduction in force of the halftime title one interventionist? So we need a motion, a second, and then a vote on.
Are we doing just the reduction or the?
And then separately, we'll do, well, I guess if you guys, I mean, we're going to do it all in one anyway, so I suppose we could do it all in one, if you want to do a motion for all in one.
I'll do a motion for the, uh, reduction force of the title one interventionist halftime and creating a full-time title one interventionist for literacy and math.
Anybody want to second that? Emily seconds, all in favor? That would be all five. I'll let you catch up.
Thank you. So the next piece is the, um, occupational therapist, halftime occupational therapist position. What we've had is an, a contracted service provider up to now. And we pay, we have a certain amount of money in the budget, um, or in grants to pay for that position. Uh, and she was here two days a week. Uh, as it turns out, with, um, having her come on salary, we actually get her for two and a half days for the same amount of money or relatively close. Um, and also again, there's that benefit of her being part of the community and here more often and, um, she is, uh, has been working with us for the five year, almost all the five years that I've been here, maybe four of them. She's tremendous, wonderful. She asked us to, to think about this and we, we talked to the association during negotiations and agreed to it. So it's just, if you guys won't mind, creating that position.
Did we do this with social work position? I don't even remember now, I'm like now having second guess of.
Did we create the social work position?
Devoting on creating it or we just put it in the budget?
That's a great question, it would have been last year, I'd have to look back at the minutes.
Because I feel like, I feel like we're doing it the right way now, but I don't know that we always have. So now I'm like second guessing, like, do we need to go back? Since we actually haven't hired someone into that social work, I mean, I know it's been posted, but. Is that.
We could do it today.
Worthwhile to make sure.
This way, I think you're right, I think we're just doing it correctly.
Now, yeah, 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 like, we're actually being involved in creating positions, whereas before it was like, we're just going to fund it and we're like, oh. Sounds good, all right. Um.
So if you'd like to, we can go, we can add it in today if you want to.
I mean.
Or we can add it in July.
We actually did, do you, or you're pretty sure we haven't done it?
Pretty sure we've never actually voted like this on positions.
On it, all right.
Did it last June?
Huh?
I went to the last June minutes and then nothing's been there about creating a position. I mean, assuming that it would be around the same timeline.
I would think, because that's what we were talking about, it was during budget season was to actually have a line item for social work.
You want to add as an adjustment to the agenda or?
We'll do like an eight B.
Sure.
I do like that we're now being like mindful of making sure that we're not, like the position is needed, although I guess in some cases it's just outright creating it versus it's not actually swapping out a reduction in force to create something like it's just net new. But like if we had to have another eighth grade teacher. The policy would be that then we should create it because we need another one.
Oh, if you wanted to add, okay.
Like if our student population was so big that we needed a second.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, Tom.
I'll make a motion to create the halftime occupational there. I will second.
All right, all in favor? All right. No problem. I mean, I'll let you just keep on going, the next one, so we'll do, actually, no, nevermind, I already did be as.
So, yes, so the, um, point four food service aid position, we, uh, did talk to Angela and Justin and I hashed it all out. And this would help support Angela and actually reduce the subs needed for Angela.
Sub pay would be less because we actually have someone on staff, yeah.
Yep, so, uh, we'd ask you to create that point four food service aid position, is right.
I would love to make a motion to.
What is, what is monetary impacts? Do we, is her position essentially grant anyway?
By reduction in, um, um, no, well, that plus the reduction in Angela's time, Angela's going to take a day. And Royce is going down day as well, so.
Going to swapping it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry about that, yeah.
So I would love to make a motion to, uh, add a point for FTE food service aid.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? All right, it be full-time social work position, which we've already been talking about, is currently applied, but it is in practice just to make sure that we're all in favor that that line or that position could actually be hired on. Can I get a motion for a full-time social work position?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All in favor? And next up will be facilities committee update and Tom Seekins. Do you need a minute to be able to get that, your computer on?
Hooking up here and I'll take a minute for this thing to wake up. Hooking up here and I'll take a minute for this thing to wake up.
Amy, do you have any facilities, James in general?
Um, the facilities committee met once, although I was unable to be in attendance last Wednesday. Um, I believe at that meeting, Tom gave the same. Presentation he's going to be giving to us today, correct?
Yeah.
Um. And um.
Up here is the court on.
We also, I guess it wasn't a facilities meeting, but we, he also presented to. Us earlier today.
We had to interview, so we have to interview companies that wanna do.
Yeah.
This, so the interview has to include superintendent. Someone on the board, so we asked Amy as a facilities person and the principal. And Sean came as well, so we interviewed. Um, we've had only one response to our request for qualifications and that was Tom, so we are just. Going through the. Steps that we need to do. The next thing, well, and we can talk about this, would be after you see Tom's presentation, the next step would be to. Have a short school committee meeting at some point to decide if this is what you wanna do. And then, right.
I will say, like yesterday, the town had a meeting on like five different areas to use a seventy five thousand dollar grant. And the school was like at the bottom of their priority list, which I found kind of interesting because I was like. It's gonna be taxpayer dollars. Either way, um. But they, you know, I went to try to make the case, although there was, it was. Flooding in our town and, and culverts and roads in our town are also. Very else needed. Um. But in my head, I know it said cooling, but really it's heating and cooling for this building, not just a cooling center, and I think that was kind of getting. Overshadowed as a cooling thing, but the woman from the Waldo County. Wherever she was from did say, she's like, you know, if you guys do wanna talk about any other issues, I could try to hook you up with people that might be able to help with. Um. Next steps that we know.
And I think that'll all tie into what Tom's gonna present as well, so.
Did I uh? The lights, should I?
Oh, yeah, let me, um. Yeah, thank you, Tracy.
I have to see a little better.
I'm gonna get out of the way.
Especially the Excel tool that shows you guys this particular building.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, probably better, right?
Yes.
So I don't have to go through the whole interview process, but essentially how I ended up here uh. Is that we've been doing all of the projects for uh, Camden. Schools um, with Maria and her team over there, so. Uh, with Chris, who is now uh, business manager, who was the principal at the elementary school, and I think spoke to. Kate, Sean, and, and probably Justin. So. They did the same similar situation, they extended an R F Q for uh, qualified energy services companies like ours. To respond to their R F Q to do um, energy, infrastructure and energy reduction projects. Essentially, they had specific needs, kind of like you guys have here. You have one boiler down, so you have one boiler to heat those whole school and. That's obviously a pretty risky place to be, so. The ever just to start would probably be the boiler room here to get, to make sure that you have full redundant boilers and. If you lose a boiler, it can be very costly. I've seen it happen for a long time. Um. My background is twenty years doing these mechanical engineering and infrastructure projects for schools in Maine. Um. I'm the president of V M C, and so I do a lot of these presentations. Um, I was gonna substitute someone tonight, but I figured I was already the person that had been doing these, so. Can't really ban you guys now. Um. We would probably just start with uh, doing an infrastructure analysis, trying to see where all the, the low hanging fruit is. We did this from city six recently, as I had said earlier in our presentation, but looking at the whole general makeup of the building, which we already kind of have, we did a cursory overview. Uh, through Kate for all the schools, the three schools, Hope, Alberton, Mcville. Um, because we'd already been working with Camden School, so we had a couple engineers go through the buildings. Um, I went through and uh, came up with some concepts and ideas and things to consider. In Camden, their biggest issues were the geothermal system, right? What do they do with that system? Because it was, and most people heard about it, it was all over the news. Uh, that and the turf field, um, that was great. Was that the same night they were buying on the turf fields? I was like, probably people here to watch me, and they're like, no. We wanna, we want the turf here, so. Uh, we came up with solutions for them and really how that acts, how, how you do it is you. You do the analysis, you come up with some engineering qualified facts, right? Here's the four options that make sense for your boiler plant with a geothermal system. This, what's great about engineering is the, the, the math is the math, right? It's either gonna work or it's not. It's gonna save you X amount of dollars. And from a lifecycle standpoint, all in in twenty years, you're gonna spend X amount of dollars, so it makes it a pretty easy decision when you look at it from a complete lifecycle cross analysis. Takes a little more work, but it, it makes total sense. And I, and I'll just show you, show you how that looks. Anyway, fancy buttons I have to go. So you come up with the different options that we did for them, and again, I showed this earlier. But this is the four options that we engineered, their solutions for Camden, and ultimately chose one, but we chose it based on again. A lifecycle cost analysis, which we would do for you guys for just a boiler room. Do it for any major that's, you know, very most uh, considerable size. So, option one, oops, on the outset, was the most logical option, which is basically stick, sticking with geothermal drilling new wells. But everyone knew that that same problem was gonna happen, because the way the soil was, the way the genetic makeup of the building was. There's so much cavitation, they were gonna spend a million dollars and have to do it all over again during the future. Jock City isn't a great investment. So when you consider fifteen years and you have to replace heat pumps. Like if you went to V R F here, heat pumps are a big thing right now for schools. We've, we've done a ton of them. We're doing all of Kittery schools with heat pumps right now. And so it is a very logical solution if the building is set up for it. There's a lot of money to be had. Um. We got the single biggest incentive for a school last year, which was eight hundred thousand for Kittery for one school, to air condition their um, uh, for a special school. So it can make a lot of sense, but it could make a lot of sense here. Uh, but the primary focus is probably a boiler and start. But when you're considering things like heat pumps, there's a replacement cost in about fifteen years, that you're not gonna have with other pieces of equipment. So in this case, when you consider those things, those variables. It looks like option three, because that's not a heat pump solution, that's a boiler plant solution with a chiller. And so when you look at it all in over the life of the project, that's really what you're spending. So it's very important not to get, don't lose sight of the upfront cost. Make sure you're looking at this with a long haul, because. Schools, especially in Maine, I mean, I went to Georgia Valley, that place is still probably the same exact. Edition of when I left it in nineteen ninety five. Um. It's. The twenty years is like the average life for it, for ventilation equipment in schools, it's like forty years. So everything you do, you have to make sure that you do it right, because it's gonna have to last a lot longer than the industry standard. That's just the way schools are. I mean, I know that because that's all I do is school projects, so. It'll constantly be a situation of, that's our new school, that new school is already twenty years old. So, then you look at it from this perspective too, you look at the costs upfront, once again. Yeah, it was an upfront, not the most logical, but when you look at these measures, which is what you would do for any of your projects. It makes total sense. And it's not even close that that was the most logical solution. And this is all backed up by real data, real engineering numbers, you know, and then you put together the bits, how it works is once you select that option. We then um. Get the engineering together, being the drawings and the bid specs. We get qualified contractors, walk them through with our engineering team. Allow them to see, touch field, get a good feel for the bit of the building, whatever the measure is, whether it's a boiler room or a heat pumps or a geothermal and um. We hold our files, we hold a couple weeks for a request for information. Our team answers all those obviously for you as, as you're kind of. Looking at the works and point of contact, we own the responsibility of the project. Then we get the bids and we reveal the bids, this is actually the Kim project, so. Show you the bids and so you see the numbers. If we've done a good job, the numbers should be pretty darn close in this one. You know, one, one, three, one, two, one, and one, two, six, so. It was, it made us feel really good that the scope was right, especially if something was technical. And then we show you all the costs, so it's very important for us, especially the school. System, especially as school boards, right? You're kind of fiscal agents for the, for the community, is that you're trying to make sure that you're spending way in the right way. You gotta see all your costs, so. We make ten percent to, to generate all the engineering, run the jobs. Um, we own the risk of everything involved in the project. Um, like I was telling Sean and Kate last time, we missed a, a geo thermal well filling situation where we were told you didn't have to do anything but cap it, then we found out through the Department of Energy that you actually had to do a special type of grab. But only one company in the state really does and it costs us eighty five thousand dollars, so. We kind of lost our shirt on that one, but um. The point is, is that with the S C O process is a lot different than a, than a general contractor. General contractor, if you build the house and the costs go up with anything, you pay for that, right? In our world, where it's designed and built, um, it's our designs. That we got the bids on, so if we miss something, it's on us, whether it's us or any other company that does these, so. It, it kind of takes away the risk factor for you, then you show all the pricing as you go along. And uh. Skip to some of the more important stuff. This is. Your layout right here. Um. This would be, this is some of the diligence work that we've already done. Um. We've made several trips up here already, just kind of laying out the. The gas farms, the, the, the gas lines, where they're gonna go, trenching through the parking lot, anything that's gonna be invasive to the school. You, you're gonna have to know this, because obviously buses coming and going and cars and students and. Of course, just sheer lifesafety aspect, um, and also can you do it? There's a lot of times folks wanna convert to gas or with a different type of. High efficiency system, and you just can't do it because of the way your, your building's set up, so. We wanted to make sure before we said, yes, this would be a great project, that we actually could pull it off, so. We've come up and made it our, we brought two fuel companies up, one of which you already work with here, that Justin really liked, but we brought up another one just to make sure that you guys get against competitive pricing than that. That pricing goes directly to you. We don't mess with the gas stuff, because. You are either gonna own the tanks or at least the tanks for the propane company, it really has nothing to do with. E M C, but. We call this the second stage regulator with the end of the yellow line, that's where we take it and we run the pipe through the building to wherever the boiler room is. In this case, your boiler room is where those stacks come up on the right hand. Corner of the building. So once we, once you get there and you decide like, that's what we wanna go, we actually, this is actually your design for your um, boiler room. We've already put together what we call thirty percent drawing, and actual drawing would be probably ten more pages, um, and a lot more depth. But this is enough for us to get competitive bids for qualified contractors, right? And so that there's no guesswork of what they're bidding on. And more importantly, when you get the bids, we can feel good that they bid on the same sheet of music, same equipment, same scope. So the bids are all equal and no one can really cut me corners. That's our job as a independent consultant is that. Um, a lot of times, folks are just having the incumbent service provider put a boiler in, but who's watching over their shoulder? They're the ones that's gonna be working on it after the fact, probably nobody. That really knows boilers and how it should be piped. So we're watching the install the whole way through, because quite frankly, it's our design. And if it doesn't yield the efficiency that we said it's going to, based on savings, then clearly there's a design fault and we have to fix that by law through the S C O process. So this process, again, that just kind of reinforces the difference between that and a general contractor is that. Um, because it's our design, no matter what happens, we own that responsibility and that, and they can be big items. You know? And then things like V R F that we got developed. That'd be a great opportunity here. This is the design that we did for the Horace Mitchell School in Kittery. This is um, what the cassettes look like in every room. It's a little bit bigger building, probably another twenty thousand square feet, this is about forty seven thousand, this one's about seventy one thousand. Um. The whole thing is air conditioned now and heat pumps are the primary source of heat. So I would consider this like a phase two or maybe do a second of the building like we did in Kittery. In one of their schools. We got started way late in the process, so we couldn't do the whole building. Um, this is no way to get it done. You only have a couple months in the summertime, so we said. We'll do the whole building, but it's gonna have to take about a year to get it done. And they jumped on it because they were able to get the eight hundred thousand dollars in free money. And so even better for them, just like in this case, you don't have to come up with any money upfront. Uh, this is all financed through a tax exempt lease purchase, which I'm gonna show you guys. So that um, same with Kittery. They didn't have to come up with a penny to do almost a two million dollar project, they did a few other things. And we are paid through efficiency main when it's done. So. Whatever the delta is between efficiency main incentive and paid finance, say it's a million dollars, um, they're financing a million. And we're getting paid through efficiency main and the remaining portion through the tax exempt lease purchase. But they don't have to make a payment for an entire year, as we discussed earlier. These are set up. Just for schools and towns to utilize, because. Budgets are always tight, facilities budgets usually are the first place to get cut and we start making cuts. And so it makes it tough to make investments like this, so these, this tool of the tax exempt lease purchase is what Camden used in their second go around. They used the bond the first time, which has to go up to the voters, the taxpayers, or the, at a referendum, or article. The taxes on these purchases does not. You guys as a board can make a decision on something like that, just like they did for their second project. And the reason is, is because it's not a bond, you're not bonded to that payment, it's, it's a lease purchase, you own it at the end. It looks identical to it, except that you're not, you're not bound to it, which is an absolute no brainer. There's no cost to issue them. It, it doesn't matter to us what you use, whether it's cash or. You know, a bond or a tax exempt purchase, it's just way easier to use in a bond, because you don't roll the dice with the taxpayers to say, yeah, we don't do that boiler. Maybe they don't know the, the, the real situation here, okay, so they vote no, because the tax dollars are already way high, so.
Tom, can you just explain how the non appropriations clause also makes it the school committee's decision and not, and doesn't have to go out to the town?
Yeah, the non appropriation clause obviously just delineates the fact that you appropriate your budget annually and you can't commit funds for ten years or fifteen years without appropriated funds. Each year, right? Um. Whereas the bond, again, it is one hundred percent, you're bound, if you're laying off staff before you're missing a payment. And our appropriation clause basically says that. If you take this school and you were to give it back to the town or sell it, and you consolidate the whole, or whatever, just, it's never gonna happen, but you never know. Um, you could then say, all the things that you financed for us in this building, say you did heat pumps, you did some lights and you did the boilers. You could literally say, come take your toys. We're leaving that building, and illegally, you can actually do that. That's why. You're able to make that decision, because the taxpayers are not bound to the decision you made for those assets. Does that make sense? Yeah, so, but again, with a bond, the taxpayers are actually responsible. Which is why they have to vote on it, you know? That's the easiest way to think of it.
Would, does that leave us any liabilities of if they decided then to, they wanted to remove it? For whatever reason, like, it could go both ways, uh, okay, we're done with it, they also would have that ability to say, okay, we're.
Nah.
No longer.
Bank would have zero interest in pulling the boiler out of your school. I mean, think about the concept of that. It doesn't even make sense.
Kind of thinking through like, if they suddenly decided, no, thank you, we're getting out of all of this. Like, we're not funding any of these anymore.
No, uh, we did, I did a project with Garner Schools like ten years ago, and now we're doing another project. And some of the stuff that we did ten years ago are actually replacing it, and they use the lease purchase, hence one of the questions came up. Is that um. Hey, we should check with the bank, because this is technically their asset and you're replacing it. And I just, I knew what the answer's gonna be, but I called um. Polly Ann Jersey, who was the finance person for Bank of America who did that job, and she laughed at me, she's like, are you serious? The bank doesn't even know where Garner Main is, or, you know, it's just a loophole that's used by schools and. It's by far the best way to finance these things. They could care less about. That kind of stuff. I'm just trying to think of someone from a bank working a boiler of a school, it would just be pretty complicated. Some of the cool stuff that you can do as part of these projects, we did this, I, I, this often ends up being the highlight of any project, but. We've done a lot of work with Elsworth Schools and. Once we became a partner with them, we just started to get to know each other better and, and realize like, they like to do, they have a strong desire for STEM work. So we sponsored STEM Academy and um, we literally built, one of my engineers built the racetrack up there in the upper left hand side, and then we brought them um. Solar cars. Sure, here, so they get to build their own solar cars. We also talked about the importance of just renewable energy. What does it actually mean? When you do these projects, you know, when you're saving uh, four hundred eighty thousand kilowatt hours of electricity. A kid's like, okay, I mean, I know, I have a fifth grader, she's like, I, I don't think they even know what I actually do. So I tried to say that to her, she's like, what does that really mean? But when you take it and you bring it into a calculation table where. You could say, alright, every home in Elsworth uses ten thousand kilowatt hours of electricity for to, to make their house, right, on an average sized home. It came out to like eleven thousand homes you could, you could effectively, effectively light. By the energy saved that they had, just by the project they did um. At Elsworth Schools, so it kind of brought it into real life um. Scenarios for it. And then we did win. We bought them the, the book that Boy Who Harnessed is the Win. Who Harnessed the Win, and if you haven't read that book or your kids, I mean, that's one of the best books ever, it's amazing, so. This is your boiler room. The one on the left hand side is the one that's, is done. Um. These are cast iron sectional boilers, and so they have sections that are kind of like, and they're just sandwiched together, and each section has hot. And each section has hot wa, uh, water that rat races around them. And in the middle, fire pushes through the middle, heats it up, and then you've got your pumps in the back that, uh. Basically shove the water through all the pipes throughout the building through coils and it effectively heats the school and it just continues, so it goes out and it comes back. Sometimes, um, when the water comes back, if there's a malfunction somewhere. It can cause thermal shock, which is probably what happened with your boiler, and it, it cracked the section. And so it's leaking, you can't use it, and they don't make these sections anymore. So it's an opportune time to replace the boilers, do it right. Go with a, a gas fired, high efficiency boiler, it's gonna be a lot more efficient, last you a long time, save you a bundle of energy. And, um, move on. This is actually what they, they look like, just for reference, this is a very, I just tried to pick some similar to yours. Same principles, just a different brand, and this is the after. So it actually looks pretty cool.
And that will fit in our existing room?
Yeah, 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 of course. Actually, one of the cool things that we do. Um, for these, I was just showing these guys this earlier, just so. That question came up in Searsport last year, we're a board member, we had a little bit of experience, not a lot. Um, so there's no way you fit four boiler, boilers in that room, so we did a three D rendering on the boiler room, just so people could see.
Did it work?
Yeah, yeah, this is the kind of stuff that sometimes we do in part of, you know, the whole project. Um, I'll probably just show you the, the other tool that I think is really of interest, which I actually created for this particular school. So if we were to go over here and I'm gonna just check everything in. This is what you get after we do an analysis, and again, we've already done quite a bit of it. Um, but all the measures on the left hand side, can everybody see that? I can zoom in if you need me to, the top would be the boiler room. And these are not competitively bid numbers, these are numbers that. Based on the fact that we did thirty, twenty nine of these boiler rooms last year, the school would have a pretty good fault sum of costs, so we use budget numbers. Um. The VRF would be for the whole school. And you'd get a much bigger incentive than that, but like I was saying earlier on the call that we had. It's way better practice to be conservative on the incentives than to. Uh, over promise and under deliver, because in these meetings, if I'd said that number is five hundred thousand for rebates, that's exactly what everybody's gonna remember. And if for some reason efficiency may touch the program or decides to not give us much, cause it's their call, it's not ours. Um, and we come back at three hundred, everybody's gonna be like, you said five hundred, and so it just becomes a thing. Um, like I said, Camden, I think it was around eighty thousand we were supposed to get for their Montessori wing, which is all heat pumps now, and we ended up getting close to two hundred and eighty thousand, so. We got them a lot more, we ended up having to do the applications all over again, because efficiency may increase the amount per, per foot. So we had to do all the engineering all over again, and I don't think they marina, didn't even know that we did that. But it got them another two hundred thousand dollars in free money, so it makes sense. Um, so all these, these measures, boiler room, VRF just heat pumps. BAS, which is Building Automation System, is essentially the brains for all of the ventilation, heating, air conditioning in your entire building. Every thermostat in the classroom typically report back to a software driven front end, it's called building automation. It's the, basically, it's the brains of the facility, it should be, in a lot of schools.
But the Jace that we have now, it's right, but the Jace we have. Is proprietary and there's no more memory, right, we can't upgrade it in, any other way, so we need that automation at some point.
A hundred percent you do, and automation is one of those things that I just, I hate, I despise the industry because it is, it's. It's so easy for companies that, to get their proprietary equipment in your building, like you have here. And you literally can't go anywhere but that one, that one place, that one company. It's a ridiculous proposition in today's world of technology, the fact that you'd be stuck with any contractor for anything. Um, so every contractor has the Niagara version of theirs, which is the non proprietary version. It's frustrating beyond belief, if you don't know that and you don't ask for it, you're gonna get the proprietary controller. And they know full well that if that fails, they're the only person that can replace it. If it goes down, they're the only company that can come back. So therefore, your bills are gonna reflect the fact that they're the only ones that can, you have no choice, you're gonna have to pay the bill, right? So BAS control upgrade would be to recommission retrofit the school to a non proprietary system. That allows you that flexibility down the road, if you don't like your service provider anymore, put it up to bid, we're doing that for Searsport right now. Um, they don't love their automation provider, we put in non proprietary stuff, I built a bid spec forum, we don't charge for that kind of thing. And, um, they're getting competitive bids for service now that they couldn't have done for the past twenty years. So that's where we wanna see you guys move forward. Uh, air handler replacement, it's just all air handlers, that would be, again, I'm just doing it for the sake of the tool to show you. Um, lighting, I didn't have the cost yet for that, so I kind of left that out. But that is a strong measure with strong savings, refrigeration controls would be things like walking coolers when you have deliveries. They open the, the cooler because you have to, and the evaporator just hammers really hard to keep up with the fact that the door's open, so you're losing. And expending a ton of, a ton of energy to try to keep up. Whereas these controllers will shut it right off immediately and recognize that's delivery. There's a door heating mechanism that shuts it all off, so it's a, it's a quick payback, it's like a two year payback for those things. Uh, building envelope, which would be sealing up windows, doors. And then, um, you know, up above the plenums, anywhere there's a crack, we do a full IR analysis of the building. Uh, it'd be tough to do that right now, obviously, warmer weather. Um, but there's other things like smoke tests and stuff like that, you can do on cracks to see if there's any air escaping. And then that pressurizes it a little too. So all in, you've got a thirty, three point seven million dollar project right now, right? That's probably not gonna happen, so. That project, based on you not putting any money down. Um. Your payment would be, you'd have to budget two hundred eighty six thousand dollars a year for towards your budget to pay for this. And that would be offset a little bit by thirty seven thousand dollars in energy savings, again, that's real conservative, it'd be probably much higher than that. But your principal interest payment is three hundred thirty eight thousand. And you've got some operational savings here as well, and construction savings, so accumulatively. The delta between the, what your actual payment is and then what your savings is going to be, you'd have to come up with two hundred eighty six thousand every year for. This is a seventeen year term. At a four point one percentage rate. You could change this to reflect any term that you, that you'd like. So if you want ten years, um, if you do that, you can see what that does to the payment, pretty simple. Then you just recalculate the payment. Obviously it goes to four fifty nine, so that might not work. So what we wanna do is go back to the project builder and say. Uh, the ventilation equipment right now is just fine, we don't really have to worry about that. Um, and solar is probably not in our future, maybe there's, there's some community solar that's being discussed, and other things.
What part of that solar? One that's up there?
You are, okay.
We have.
Um. So then you could, you go, now it's down to one point seven million. So then you just recalculate based on seventeen years, so went from two eighty six to one nineteen. Um. That's assuming, that's assuming rebates, so we'll get that up. So then we're down to one nineteen, but then you say, okay, VRF's probably gonna be a second phase situation. We don't need to do the whole building automation system right now, we could probably get away with just doing. As, as Kate had said, the Jace upgrade so that you have more capacity, more memory. Um, and building envelope does make a lot of sense, refrigeration makes a sense, a lot of sense. Um, probably some lighting, but that's not part of it, at this point, and we go back to this. And you said, okay, now we're getting back to probably more manageable costs. So essentially, to do a five hundred twenty one thousand dollar project, based on the numbers given here. Uh, you'd have to budget starting in July first of two thousand twenty six, so two fiscal years, essentially, right? For you, um, you'd have to budget twenty two thousand to put towards just paying to do half a million dollars worth of work. So for schools, that's a heck of a lot more amenable than coming up with a half a million dollars, right? It just works much easier. And then what you could do, after we start building projects together, you then take this thing, you assign it to. What we call the option builder, which for three port schools. We took this thing and made it eight years, because they wanted a ten year capital plan, we're doing two projects for them this summer. And then eight years remaining to get control of all their ventilation, all the stuff that need roofs, windows, all their stuff. So instead of saying one, two, three, this would say budget year two thousand twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, so on and so forth. And they use this to create a pathway for the taxpayers to understand that. Hey, why, and of course, they have seven buildings, right? So while we're doing a nice project, it didn't solve all of those problems, we've got a lot left to do. Um, most of this stuff's being done at the high school, we've got Powell, we've got Derna, we've got all these schools. So it allowed them to build a capital plan, and you guys could do the same exact thing here, obviously just on smaller scale. And that's why I highlighted the yellow, because that would be your annual contribution associated with that project. And you can see what's included here. So it's a pretty, a pretty powerful tool, um, that not only helps you pick a project that you can, that's financially palatable. But also creates a pathway for the next five years of capital planning for you guys to, to put out there for the taxpayers to know, and you guys as a committee, know. Okay, we did the boiler room, what do we have left? Well, let's check our sheet, and so what we typically see folks do is. And committees, facilities committees are like, let's print this sheet out. And then you guys can all sit around and just say, alright, I don't think we really need this, and next year, move it to this phase. And then make some notes, send it back to us, and we'll adjust it and create a new plan for you, and that becomes part of your capital plan, right? But you have to talk to the building for a while to get to all these numbers, you know, get there. Or you just come up with that, we did this based on a couple of visits. So it's, it doesn't take a lot to get there and figure it out. If, I mean, this is what we do every day, so, I mean, I'm sure no one has seen this stuff before, it'd be a little different, but. So this is essentially how you pick your project, you know, how you go about it, and then once you, so once you pick your scope here. As I showed you with all the drawings and the bid specs. You then send that out, bring in the qualified contractors, walk them through the boiler room, let them ask questions, get the bids, trade the bids, and then run the project.
And then Tom, can you talk about how, how you're financing and incentives and things like that?
Yeah, all the efficiency main incentives, no matter what the measure is, well, we take care of that, we have free people in our offices, they literally do it all day long. Killer job, I don't know how they do it, I love them so much, because it's just paperwork and on this computer screen. And it is painful filling out efficiency main applications for custom measures. VRF took us two months in Kittery to fill it out, with licensed professional engineering. Being, they make it so hard, which is why people aren't using them. And that's why I tell Justin, don't worry about the due date of the end of June, to get the, uh, VRF application as in. It's due by the end of June, it was already due at the end of March, they extended it to the end of June. And the construction has to be done by the end of November. The reason they keep extending it is because there's not an influx of applications coming in, because they made it so friggin hard to apply for. You know, so not a lot of schools are gonna go spend fifteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, have an engineer fill out the applications. Whether or not they're gonna do it, they don't even know. So I, I think the money will still be there at a point. And we'll, so we'll do all that work, um. Once you know what the project is that you'd like, just like Camden, I sent this same spreadsheet, just like this. But I usually give them this portion, which obviously I cleaned it up and select just the things that move forward with. And then this section, so I show the bank the expectations that you have. Um, and then I have them bid directly to you guys. So Chris got the bids directly from two different lending, um, institutions, municipal leasing consultants and Bank of America. When you're a smaller school, when you're a single school, municipal leasing consultants would be your primary, um, finance target there. So I would send all this to them, copy you guys, and then they would provide you a bid directly, um, to start. They usually take thirty to forty days to close on financing, and the way that works is essentially. Um, say you went ahead with this project that we have, isolated here at option one. Boiler room, a little bit of automation, some lighting, refrigeration, building envelope, once we would wanna order boilers. Um, and mobilize some costs with contractors to get welding and get set up, it could be a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we'll have the invoice, we'll send it to you. Um, you okay it to the lending partner, and then they wire this money, and then we pay the contractors, but it's pretty simple. Once you do it a couple of times, so you draw it down from an escrow, just kind of like, uh, building a house. You have everything in a construction loan, sitting in a cow. And what's nice about the tax and please purchase is that you're only paying interest on what you're using at that time. Whereas the bond, you pay interest on the entire amount right from the jump. Which kind of stinks, cause some of that you might not be using for six to eight months, and that's a lot of money, it's a lot of interest. So, yeah, and then we just draw it down until the whole job's done, um. We won't allow all the contractors to be paid until we've determined whether or not they're done, they love, love to do little tricks of. You know, especially automation, it's all set, um, it's all working. And can you release our final payment? But we're like, let's, let one of our automation, automation specialists go verify that it's actually done.
Expand on that just a little bit, Tom, on what you guys do, because when we, we had a project manager a couple of years ago when he decided on the roofing. And there were a lot of problems with the side, there was some project manager had to keep coming back, so his, what it cost ballooned. For him alone, right, because he's doing a lot of homework and extended, but that's not how you work at that factory?
Oh, yeah, very accurate, you can't, you can't do that, that would be a change order, there is no change orders to our projects. So if we're here more than we were supposed to be. That's on us, I gave you guys an examples of Oxford schools, we do all of Oxford school stuff. And we did a huge lighting project for them, an LED conversion this past year, selected ten thousand eight hundred fixtures. And the boat coming from overseas was held up, um. Somewhere up Panama, I remember that big barge, that, yeah, we had lights on that thing, so that was fun. And so it came in way late, we got started way late, and so we had to do all of the work, second shift. And pay electrician, second shift labor. Um, and then double the amount of staff, because we only had like two months to pull off a job that big. And because we had a timetable to meet before school started, and it cost us a fortune, but we just did it. So if a project manager's here, come on, taste longer than they should have been, that's small potatoes in our world of what we've missed, so. When you're just, when, this is the only legal way to design bid projects, bid build projects for school domains, using this methodology. And when you design bid build, we are responsible for everything, cause it was our design. If you gave us a design and said, here, use this, you'd say, okay, no problem, but if there's things missing in this thing, it wasn't our design. We can't own the responsibility of this. So with a boiler room design, if, um. Something, a check file was in the wrong spot and caused some problems or something downstream, we own that. Um, and we'll keep responding and returning until it's fixed. At no cost, obviously, to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the initial, um, thing you showed us with the long term projections on cost. Was there a consideration or could there be a consideration if? We decide that cooling is also a priority? In terms of like, is the boiler still the right path for us if, if we think we need cooling?
Yeah, like in Kittery, same, same situation, they, they did the boiler room first.
Yeah.
We're not huge proponents in a school to say, let's roll the dice and go with what the general public says. Which are mainly heat pump people, that'll tell you, oh my god, you don't need a boiler, we could just use heat pumps in that building, well, it's a school. I mean, I don't, I don't, I would wanna roll the dice, I'd wanna boiler plant as my backup.
Yeah, no, I, I do actually agree with you, I have a heat pump, so I would go with a boiler. Uh, uh, but I was just curious if, if cooling was part of the projection at all.
Oh, absolutely.
Is that the VRF of the cooling?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we would build a two pipe system, so it's not quite as expensive for pipe, the difference is.
Got it.
You cannot simultaneously heat and cool with these systems.
That's great.
Yeah, with the two pipe, it's kind of heating or cooling. Um, which I think works for a school, it's literally like half the cost. So when you go with a four pipe system, really in, in commercial office buildings where people are there and affinity, and you've got different age groups and different people. People just are different, right, and you've got people sitting next to each other, um, coming off the same unit. One person's gonna be cold, the other person's gonna be hot, it's just the nature of who we all are.
Right.
When you have four, four pipe system, that same system can heat and cool at the exact same time. Which is amazing technology, it just sold, you're expensive, you're running four pipes versus two. So, no, we would have, that number we gave would, would have been for cooling again, even.
Great. This was super thorough, thank you.
Yeah, you know. Mainly, I don't like them, for, for sole source of, I have heat pumps in my house, I mean, everything that I've got up there, I've done a manhole. Mainly, I don't like them for, for sole source of, I have heat pumps in my house. I mean, everything that I've got up there, I've done in my own home. Um, but these can set right here, the smoking port branch selector box. If that goes down, you can have up to thirty-two classrooms on that one branch selected box. So if that one branch selected box goes down, thirty-two classrooms go down. You don't even have thirty-two classrooms. We're going to do that, right? On just one branch left. It's just way too risky. And I get the people that do heat pumps and that's all they do. You know what you're talking about? It's like nothing.
Well, and the lifespan's not that great. Like we're talking about, the schools. We eke out every single year, we can't, and we put in, so you're not gonna get a forty-year lifespan out of a heat pump.
Exactly. It's ashtray standard, which is what we live by. It's about twenty years for heat pumps. Um, obviously, ground source is different than air source. That, that's air source. You're taking heat from the outside. Ground source, of course, you're pulling water from below grade. Um, there's a lot more mechanical components involved in pulling water from the ground than there is air. So, uh, if I'm, if you do the heat pumps, for me, it's air source all day. Um, unless it's a house, I talk to people all the time. I have geothermal in my house. It runs great, correct? Because you have it at a pretty consistent temperature and it's probably a couple thousand square feet, not forty-seven thousand. With off days, snow days, summer schedule. It doesn't run like this. That's what geothermal wants to do. You know? You're pulling water from five hundred feet below ground and expecting it to be perfect. It's just not. That's a tough thing to expect.
So you're, if we were to do this, you're saying we would, the school wouldn't actually have to budget anything until two years? Or do you get portion of? Like, is there initial startup money for being able to draft all of this?
No, we, we hold all that cost, just like we did. We sure.
And then you're getting ten percent of the overall cost of it, not what, like if we went with the twenty-two thousand or whatever, you're getting the actual. Ten percent of the overall.
We're getting ten percent of the cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like in here. It ended up being two percent of engineering of that cost. And one and a half percent of project development. And then the rest is just, there's really no site conditions or, or handles to pay them. Um. Yeah, that's pretty much it. Our ten percent is what we get paid. Yeah. But we hold all the engineering costs, all the development costs, until you get your financing and the financing is what pays for that. So, the initial project, we typically don't. We don't really nail it because we spent a lot of time engineering, that you clearly don't get all that money back. Because you're not gonna do all those measures that I showed you before, right? And for the example of Freeport, there's a hundred and thirty-eight measures that we identified, because there's seven schools. They only did like. It's a couple million dollar project, so maybe they did fifteen measures. We had, we spent a lot more time engineering than that. But we're just hoping that it's gonna be a long-term relationship and then the engineering's done. We've already paid for it. You know, there's not a lot of engineering left to be done, so. That's kind of how it works. Yeah.
It is the, the cost of you embedded within that twenty-two, like whatever our amount is that we end up paying for budgeting, or we would then budget on top of the one point eight.
It's all baked, it's all baked in, and I sent it to the bank. It's got our fees in it, how we're paid. And um, we even expect you to hold retainage until the whole job's done. Um, even though we're doing the same thing to the subcontractors. We're, we're holding five, ten percent retainage based on the complexity of the measure that they're doing. Um, just to make sure it's done, so they can't walk away. We had a sheet metal company go out of business on a job recently and left us high and dry, so we had to, we had to hold them. Eighteen thousand dollars in insulation because they wound up in the business, so. We do like to hold some retainage.
Yeah.
We'd expect you to do the same thing. You don't pay us until it's completely done.
All right, did any of this sneak into it? Because that sounds potentially kind of weird. Um, but our roofs are atrociously leaky. Um. And I think that might have also caused some of our issues with various components breaking down throughout our building because. Roof leaks and then water, those sort of places it shouldn't be. Is that? Need to be a factor in where we're placing these new?
No.
Systems, or do we need to do anything special to make sure we, I mean, we don't want obviously others leaking anyway, but.
Yeah.
That's the nature of our building.
Mi- nature of schools, in name, pretty much. Um, it's not ballasted, which is good, meaning it's not covered in rocks to hold it down. It's all up here at EPM, so. It's, that's a much better situation than most. But none of the things that we're gonna do are gonna affect the roof. Everything is interior, which is what makes, which is what.
Well, no, I'm wondering, do we need to do anything to extra protect it from? Another eventual leak that will end up happening. I mean, the reality is the roof has leaked about five different times.
Yeah.
And everything in here has been flooded and, like, that's the reality of our building on this area.
Um, roofs are something we do a lot of. They're almost on every single project, especially with multiple buildings. Um, probably have eighteen school projects this summer of, of size. And almost all of them have a roof job as part of it. Same concept applies, except. We actually take the roofs a little step further when it comes to the analysis. We'll actually do it, we'll do it um, an X-ray of the roof that night. Because water will sit on a roof during the day and it'll be really hot, right? And then when it disperses, you can't see where it's leaked. So you have no idea where it's leaked. The best indicator of where your roof's leaking is when you look there at night, there's no water and you X-rayed the roof. You can see where there's moisture. So it tells you exactly where your biggest culprits are. Um, it does a couple of things. It obviously isolates where the leaks are, but it also saves you a ton of money in insulation costs. So one of the biggest costs for replacing a roof is replacing that insulation that's below the deck. Um, efficiency may not pay for some of that, but uh, you could, we did a roof job for one school that we're doing in the summer. And it was six hundred thousand dollars in insulation had been budgeted. But we took that design, did a roof study. And it actually only needed about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in insulation, because they were just gonna do the whole thing. Because like you said, there's leaks everywhere. We don't know. Let's just do it all, you know? But if you do the analysis, it was pretty clear, yeah.
I just wanna make sure that we're not ignoring the fact that we know our roofs are. Chronically leaking and then causing during winter, like freezing pipes that then burst and. It just.
Yeah.
It feels like every other year, that's how like our reserve money.
Yeah.
Was taken from trying to do repairs to the roof that caused damage on the inside of that building.
Yeah.
So Tracy, you mean, like.
Like if we're putting this back in here, do we need to do something more to the roof to make sure we're not leaking?
Is this worth vulnerable?
Right.
Because of the roof that we have.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I would hate to invest two million. To have rain come down on it or a pipe burst over it or whatever.
Tracy, when they do their analysis, it'll be the entire building envelope. So they'll look at the.
We look at the whole measures to make sure that.
Which would be great. For success, because I feel like that. That's always been hard to deal with.
And that's part of that project builder thing, the capital planning tools. You can start plugging money into that thing for the roof, because you could do it second at a time. Um, we've done that for a lot of school systems where we'll do like, that's almost a third, third, third to third.
Mm-hmm.
We did that for Sears Port. Um, did a portion of the roof, do, we'll do another third and then another. Um, same con- same concept. We'll put together the bid specs, flashing ladders. OSHA-rated ladders and, and safety mechanisms and do it for ashtray standard, get the competitive bids, and then get the contractors that you like. What's nice in this concept is that you don't have to take the lowest bid. Like you do if you use a bond for, for general services. You have to take those bids no matter what it is. If you're not, if you don't, and that contractor finds out, they'll take you to court. It happens all the time. With this process, you don't, you have the right to accept or reject any proposal that you get.
Hmm.
So it's nice because you may have contractors that really do a good job for you guys. And electricians, a roofer, and they're here when you need them. They're here at night, they're here in holidays. And it just really stinks to get to a place where you have to get competitive bids and they don't get it because they were like, hundred dollars higher. It doesn't matter in BGS's world. In this world, you could easily take them. Pick whoever you want. You know, and make them part of the bid process. So I'm sure you guys have contractors like that here. I don't know them, but I'm sure you do. Sure Justin has contractors that show up when he needs them too, you know?
Well, Justin.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, poor guy.
He's got a lot of energy. He's got a lot of energy. Uh. Any other questions? Hot, you too.
Yeah.
We don't have any cool. Thank you very much for your time and for presenting this, what, three times now?
Thank you. But you've done so much.
Four different formats.
Yeah, no worries.
Thank you.
Do what you gotta.
I'm gonna, I'm turning the lights back on.
Alright guys, have a good night.
Thank you very much. You got him, Kate? Just keep on pressing the top button of all. Did, um, was Steve Hand part of any of these? Has Steve Hand seen any of this?
They were only a couple of people that were able to make it to the meeting last week.
Okay.
I'm not sure who they were.
I kind of want the select board to also know about this.
Wasn't there, um. At the meeting, um. Josh was there, Alvin, Justin. That's all the committee, right? Because the others, Steve and you and me, we weren't there, so. Oh, I don't think Seth was there though. Was he?
This is recorded though, right?
Yeah.
So we could get it to the.
This was recorded, so we could certainly ask, you know, at least send it to Steve and ask him to take a look at that portion. That would be helpful.
I was considering even just joining one of their schools or their select meetings, just to say, this is kind of like. The gist of what we're talking about. Clearly, I'm not gonna be able to present the way that he did, but at least. Because part of me, the reason I was asking about whether we had to pay anything upfront, is because if we knew that it was like. Ten thousand upfront that we had to pay or something, I might be able to kind of plead our case to the select board to say. Could you just give us ten thousand of the seventy-five and maybe? Allow us to use that as kind of front money, but if we don't.
No, the way this works is he'll, he'll help us to get any incentive or, or the rev grants or anything that's available. And then anything else gets financed through this long-term lease, low, low-interest lease.
No answer.
To own program, sorry. And that's only available in municipalities. It's, it's in statute. And so, once. You, then you know what you're financing and then you know what your payment is and then you don't start payment for a year from the date that the loan gets established, correct? So it'll probably be in the FY twenty-seven budget that you would know that your payment was twenty, twenty-two thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever you decide on.
Um, can you remind me next steps on this? Would, we have to vote on accepting?
Yeah, we should have another brief meeting this month. You know, maybe you guys wanna do some research, have conversations with me and Justin, talk to the. Select board, do whatever we wanna do, look at references. We can call different, you know, we have Camden, but we also. Done a lot of work for Kittery and I know Superintendent Oxford Hills, we can talk to those folks and.
So we wanna.
If you want. But.
So this one?
He said, if we get it then this month, we should be able to, Justin's concerned obviously about starting the school year without a boiler again, so. But um, Tom does feel like if we can get it, the ball rolling, we can get the boilers.
Do we actually have any viable other alternatives other than what we got presented tonight?
We could put out to bid for the project if, like, let's just say we just said it's the boiler project only, right? Because we don't have the wherewithal to do all that stuff that he did about what.
Mm-hmm.
And we could then go, then your option is, like, he, he quoted the boiler at like a hundred and seventy-one thousand, I think I saw up there on the, on his. So then you would have to either go to town and say, can we have a hundred and seventy-one thousand for the boiler to buy it outright? Or can we bond a hundred and seventy-one thousand? But there are windows for bonds, right? I think the fall would be the earliest we could get a bond. And the bond has to go to town vote also. Um.
So here he is, not viable.
Well. I'm not saying it.
I know, but I'm.
And then we'd run into the same situation we had when we did the roof and siding repair, which is that we go the lowest bid or the only bid that comes in. And we then might have, we might need extra support to get that done. The one thing I'm kind of, one positive thing about this is because he does, they do work all over the state, they have vendors. Who routinely, like they'll get more bids than we would get.
Because they have name recognition.
Because we've gotten, historically, we've gotten pretty low uh, bids.
I think they.
Not low bids, but low amounts of bidders.
They'll also get more uh, even, if that's the right word, bids, because the RFP will be very specific about.
What's needed.
So it's apples to apples.
We did learn that we don't know how to write.
Well, we don't know.
We're not engineers, exactly.
That's what is, seems logical to me, is that they know these systems and.
And he pointed that out when he.
Systems.
He pointed that out when he talked about the, the efficiency main, like we did try to do that application. We've taken a look at that application. Yeah, it's very technical.
And they were the only company who responded to the RFQ.
There were a couple of companies that inquired. Uh, after what we wanted for, through response to qualifications, I mean, requests for qualifications, they are the only ones. That A, got it in under the deadline or got it in at all. We did not get any other. Responses to our requests for qualifications. There was another company that we'd been talking to and they pulled out.
Makes it straightforward.
I mean, I think what is embedded in it is. I just went based on, like, if we did the one point eight million one. I'm not saying that's what would necessarily, but if that was one of the options that was on there that I saw that stuck out as number, essentially they'd be making a hundred and eighty thousand on it. Whereas if you go with just the boiler, you kind of know what you're getting. So like.
Spending that whole.
I'm trying to find the pros, the cons kind of piece of it, and I think that's where the con lies, is it is a hundred and eighty thousand that would end up getting paid.
Right.
But I feel like it's worth it because we actually will get. The end result that we want and we'll be paying it partially with some of these grants and.
And rebates. Money works. We can't take on risk. Like if something goes wrong, what do we go to town vote? Like. I feel like a, a solid number is worth some money.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't know, I mean, Steph and I can look back at the research and what we paid quarter. To project manage the small project that we did do, but it, I think it was, you know, it was in the tens of thousands.
I mean, I think what he was speaking to was essentially you're kind of gambling with them. You know, you don't have to gamble. There's, it's a little bit higher cost, but they're going to be absorbing a lot of.
The work.
The work and issue management and.
And the responsibility. They said if something goes wrong, like that was a big.
Right.
There's also just the, the efficiency of them knowing what they're doing and if we.
Manage it all.
Yeah, if we took that on, we have a much deeper learning curve as we've.
Learned, yeah.
Right? Um, so that's another plus.
Yeah. Like I keep on finding all the benefits, but I'm also like, I don't wanna just be like, oh, it seems great. There's like, sometimes when it seems too good to be true.
Right.
You're gonna wanna find out like.
That's why.
Like, I sell my product all the time, or the company's product all the time. I understand sales techniques, like they're gonna show you. This is all the benefits of it, but.
That's why it might make some sense if you guys, between when we, whatever, today and whenever we meet again. To call Freeport, call Kittery, you know, talk to them and see.
Like free schools.
Yeah, Gardner, um.
Were you involved in Camden's at all?
Uh, yeah, in the sense that I was aware of what we were doing. Um, you know, I think there's several benefits. There's, they do absorb a lot of risk, you know? In terms of the design. Um, but they're also gonna assure you that you get as much of the state money that's out there for. These kinds of projects. That's not necessarily true. You hire a local vendor, you know, you might qualify for all that, but you.
We're the ones writing it.
And understanding.
I know, right?
It seems like we, we, there's a. My gut is that there's a strong likelihood we would save more than ten percent.
Right.
By using them. Just in terms of the things, like he said, that there's non-proprietary. Systems that, that's not something that we would. systems that, that's not something that we would know.
I don't know.
Yeah. And based on the school committee rules, we can't vote on it tonight? Are we good?
Oh. It's not on there.
Not on the agenda.
But we didn't do that for food services or social position either.
You might wanna take the time to.
Check other references.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, well, what we could do, cause we do have a joint school committee meeting on the twenty-fourth, maybe we could take like a few minutes, is the twenty-fourth too late?
No, I don't think so, I kind, I kind of floated that to Justin, that it might be the twenty-fourth, because that would be easier for you guys to meet, just meet a half an hour earlier.
Yeah.
Or whatever, so, um, what do you think Sean, do you, do you hear from Justin that you thought that the twenty-fourth would be too late to vote on this?
I don't, I don't, I don't recall what Tom said about his timing, but I don't think one way or the other is gonna change whether you can get on his, his list.
Did he just say by the end of month, is that?
Yeah, I, he, I mean, they're both saying sooner rather than later, but I do think it's two weeks for you guys to take it.
I think.
Yeah.
Anybody got time to do that?
What do you say?
Anybody got time to do that, to make phone calls?
I can call, I can call somebody.
All right, I'll reach out to you guys.
Love you guys! I'm like, it's end of school year stuff and I can't even barely keep up with three teenagers and reference checks. Alright. And then if the twenty-fourth at five thirty?
Yeah, I'll post an agenda.
For just the, well, I mean, the normal file order, public comment.
Well, eh, eh, do you think the office in Camden is too small? You've been there?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so.
Hope.
You wanna meet at Hope the School?
Yeah.
Okay.
Will that matter for our town, if they wanted to be public comment, they're gonna have to drive to Hope?
No, and we'll zoom it and we'll post it.
Joint meetings, we don't usually zoom.
But we'll do in the Lincolnville meeting.
Somewhere a little closer, fire station or the library, we've met there before.
I had trouble getting the fire station last year. Um, the library, the problem is we meet on Tuesdays and the select board might be meeting that night.
Actually, do we have any rules that say we have to meet in the town if it's a Lincolnville community meeting versus joint?
I, I, I can look again at the.
I know, right?
I don't think there's anything in the, uh.
I just feel like maybe it's kind of, and if we did a fully remote, like, it's just a Zoom call, that could make sense to me, cause then it doesn't really matter at that point.
June twenty-fourth is the select board meeting, so the library is not open.
I love the fire station.
But then where is the joint school committee meeting?
I think the last time we discussed that it was gonna be at Camden, at the superintendent's office, but if it's not gonna fit.
If all of us go to a joint.
Yeah.
Cause we usually do have everybody.
Yep, it's pretty, not that big a conference room, there's like seven or eight chairs around it.
And there's like fifteen of us just on the committee. Five on each town.
I was hoping.
Are there a lot of it?
The office, go get about the office, but it's not.
Alright.
I mean, when we rented it, Maria offered that there are two conference rooms right next door.
Oh, if we could go to use Rose Hall, actually, that would be very comfortable and centrally, more centrally located than any of the.
What's Rose Hall?
That's the.
It's where the Camden Rockford.
Renovated, newly renovated. What do you think Sean, you're the acting superintendent over there.
I'm actually, the, the conference rooms are open. And more than, more than.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll reach out to, well, Maria's not back until next week.
You can probably just reach out to what's her name?
Amanda.
Amanda?
Yeah.
Check with Amanda at.
So I have, in my calendar, that the joint meeting's at five, did I enter the wrong time?
Oh yeah, it's usually six.
Yeah.
So are we changing, we're gonna meet?
I'll post it on the, I mean, uh, for the joint board meeting, I, I guess, let me find out.
The joint board meeting will be at six o'clock on the twenty-fourth, although it sounds like they're pending where the location would be. The hope is, we could just meet thirty minutes earlier, wherever that is, and maybe we'll just take the owl with us and do it via Zoom, so it keeps enjoying. Yeah.
We'd be recorded.
Can someone just double check with Justin and with Tom?
Do you want him to come back?
No, in terms of giving an answer.
Oh, gotcha.
And the work wouldn't take place until.
They wanna do it this summer, that's.
They wanna do it this summer?
Yeah.
Right.
Do you have the time to be able to do all the reference checks, like?
They're gonna get us all that.
Yeah. Because if you heard, he's already actually done some behind the scenes work.
Well, they can't start it for thirty to forty-five days anyway, because the bank has to approve it.
So the closing, you're right, you're right.
They have to wait for that before they can do anything.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Well, if you're just meeting via Zoom, you could do it, you could do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Why not?
Well, they have to have time to call. And we have to have five days posting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could we meet next?
No, we have to have sufficient time, we don't have five days, but we do have to have sufficient public notice, we'd make it a special meeting and, um. Why don't we see how the reference checks go, maybe if you get them done in the next couple of days, then we can meet earlier, if not, if you're gonna be like, oh god, everybody's busy.
Week is gonna be insane though, cause that's eighth grade graduation week.
Yeah.
And.
I have two school committee meetings already that week, it's gonna be crazy next week. But if it's Zoom, maybe we could. I don't know.
Make it work.
Need a lunchtime.
I think if we did it, if we wanted to do it the week of the ninth, it would have to be via Zoom, because there's gonna be so much stuff.
I agree with that, there's a lot.
Going on.
Could be nice to meet on the tenth, to be able to see how the vote.
Yeah, I guess we won't know, but.
We won't know till later that night.
Yeah.
And the school would already be busy, cause they're gonna have people here voting, which isn't the end of the world, but.
But we're just doing a Zoom, right? We're talking about.
Oh, right, right, if, yeah, yeah.
But to that point, maybe nice to know what the vote is, so like, on the eleven.
Yeah. Not the eleventh, cause that's the eighth grade graduation. And that, well, it's at like five o'clock or something, like, it's not, yeah.
It's early and I can't be here, cause I was hoping this year, I meant it's all three graduations, but that's Appleton's.
And I think the twelfth is the eighth grade party. Decorating up the community building, I think that if we were to do it, it'd have to be the ninth, I don't know that we'd be able to make it work any other day that week, just because there's, unless we did a Friday thirteenth, which feels or, you know, the week of the sixteenth is the other option, I mean, I think at that point.
Spring carnival, we would hate to.
The sixteenth is spring carnival?
Thirteen.
Oh, Friday, yeah, yeah, gotcha, I was like, I didn't know they were doing it on a Monday.
Tentative Zoom on Monday the ninth, that's great.
Would have to be before five forty-five, cause I've got Hope at six.
Okay. Five P M.
It's a Zoom.
Yeah, it would be Zoom, yeah, yeah, yeah. Where, would you already be, I mean, do you have travel time though?
From there, no, I'll just go to the Hope and Zoom from there.
Are we doing, we're on number ten, so.
But we're waiting on the.
We're just setting a emergency meeting date for just voting on going with, what is their name again?
We're waiting on setting the ninth until we, you guys.
Get references.
I think we.
Well, no, you'd have to do the references anyway.
So I have to post it tomorrow, that it's the ninth, okay, okay.
We'll report out on the references.
We may just not do it.
Right, you may.
Right, if the references are horrible, then you may say, no thank you and.
Or that we need to gather more.
I'll post that tomorrow then.
We will need to know, I mean, we've heard a few school systems reference through his presentations, but.
Kittery, Camden.
Certainly.
It's gonna send us.
Okay.
Schools, so we can contact, yes?
Yes, yes, that's what I, I said.
And then, um, the only other question, I mean, Kirsten and I can talk about this, but if there's any other input that people here have in terms of questions specifically that you wanna make sure that we ask, um, that would be good to know.
We'd send those to Tom too, I'm sure.
My biggest question is, do they seem to loophole you? Well, that's not technically part of our contract, that's not really part of our liability, like, I would wanna make sure that when they say they cover liability, that it's clear.
And Tracy.
And it's actually happening.
How do you wanna loop in the select board?
I'll just reach out to Ladley, cause I don't know if they're meeting tonight or next week, either way, I wouldn't necessarily be able to do anything, cause we're meeting tonight.
But they could at least see this, watch this video if they.
Yeah, 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 I can give them a heads up, I just, usually they tend to be similar to us of like, join a meeting and cause otherwise, they're kind of seeing something, but it's not public discussion per se, because they're just thinking about their own.
Right.
But I can certainly forward to them.
So let's see when they're next.
Once you get that uploaded, or do you wanna do, once you get it uploaded, just send to Dave to pass on to the town, select board?
Check with Ladley and however she, yeah, I can send it right directly to her in an email, if that's what.
You have her email?
I can get it, I'm sure.
Are we saying hi, Cam?
Yeah. Via Zoom.
Okay, um, just see when the select board's meeting again.
Or maybe it's more, we just say, this is what we're considering, we value your input, if you wanna join the meeting on the ninth, to be able to provide us.
Yeah, that makes sense.
With any feedback after watching the video.
Yeah, it's not, doesn't say on the town website.
I'll just text it.
Okay, anyway. Alright.
Alright.
Right.
Next is setting summer meeting dates.
So you have your new superintendent in here?
And I know, uh, you had floated the idea of maybe a workshop in July. Um, I really want the summer off.
Yeah, you likely won't have Justin in July.
So I'm not opposed to it, but I at least want you guys to know, like, you won't be here, so that won't. No, go ahead.
Their next meeting's the ninth, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's alright, I just wanted to, yeah.
So that would be.
They'd already be meeting.
If they could zoom in at five.
Although at five, they, it's before they meet. So they'd have a chance to be able.
To be part of the conversation.
They can zoom in at five.
What time is the school, or what time is the floor for me now?
Usually at six. Well, while that's happening, we can discuss.
Uh, our regular school committee meetings start again the first.
So what we've done the past.
August first, yeah.
Is.
Or August fourth would be.
We haven't had the first week of August, we've done it kind of later in the month, because um, there's not a lot going on in the first week of August, Justin's barely back. Um, so we have waited until like the second or third week in August in the past, but.
Did like the fifteen bucks.
And I, but I think though, part of what I was thinking, and, cause, so, I wanted to bring up the July, because um, our new superintendent had reached out about doing a workshop. And so then I was thinking, well, maybe if we did keep the fourth, that could be our workshop to kind of get our act together in terms of our goals, or what do we wanna work, like, we can have that as a workshop on that first August fourth. And then two weeks later, have the one that does like, the parent handbook and school bus schedules and all of the normal stuff that gets happening, the only hesitation that I have is last year, I think parent, we were trying to thread the needle and parents then felt like some of the stuff was getting approved, like, just before school happened. And so, I think, um, not that it's the end of the world, the school doesn't start till like, the second week of September. After vacation, well. Oh no, it is September second this year.
I would also like to, and I know that in the past, it seemed that the practice has been to not pay vendors in the summer, and I am completely opposed to that. So I do want warrants to have in July, enjoy.
But that's okay, cause Lincolnville allows electronic payment.
But we don't have a finance committee to approve anything, cause we don't vote in electors until.
Amy and I are, are finance great, but does that not roll over?
I think it does. I think until you vote new finance committee.
Members in, it can stay the same.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so school this year is starting before Labor Day then?
AP warrants are gonna need a quorum anyway, they're not just financed, they're gonna need three people anyway to sign AP warrants.
Okay.
It just goes out.
These two signatures, only payroll is the finance team, AP is, is three or more, we always get a quorum.
And you can do it like that.
Yeah, yeah. It's just that we don't need, it's not, we don't even need the finance team, we need.
The whole thing anyway.
Or a majority, whatever.
Alright, I'm bringing this back in, cause we're like squirrels right now.
Yeah.
So set summer meeting dates. Is there an appetite for having a workshop day?
Yes.
Would you guys rather do a July workshop and then just resume normal business in August, or do two meetings in August?
I would do July, I, early August, I'm not really around, I like Zoom, but.
Okay.
Generally.
I agree, my early August is harder than my July, but I also understand, not everybody, everybody has different summer schedules. You were just saying, uh, that you think our August meeting is early to be doing handbook, is that what you were saying?
Justin doesn't, well, he works two hundred and ten days. Well, uh, Justin works two hundred and ten days of the year, so he's, gets done in June and doesn't start back up again, actually, i- if, if he takes most of his time in the summer, it's like mid, mid-August or the, after the first week in August. Um, so if he's updating the handbook, he might not be ready to closer to the school year to update the handbook, I don't know where he is, if he could get it done before the school year ended, I, I don't know. Cause, you know, the, the hope is to allow, he, they do do some work over the summer, but the hope is to allow the principals to.
I get that, I bet they were like a workshop day and a meeting are separate and workshop, you might not need to.
Right, right, right.
I'm just trying to figure out like how close together we put those, early August is hard for me, but if it's like mid-August.
We can do them back to back, I mean, we can choose whatever, yeah.
We could have a workshop meeting an hour before your first board call.
God, no, don't do that to us.
I, I won't do anything to you.
I know, but our meetings.
Usually go for like two and a half hours anyway, and I think having an hour beforehand to do a workshop, our brains will be mush at the end of a regular schedule.
I think we should also like, make sure we have an agenda that's.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
I do like the idea of a, of a workshop to like, say.
Yeah.
Cause we never have time to do goals, it's always very, very rushed. Well, I know we've talked.
I mean, I, I, what I was hoping for was a vision of where I should be putting climate change with this school committee next year.
Yeah.
Right, and we've done some work toward a strategic.
I mean, I, I, what I was hoping for was a vision of where I should be putting climate change with this school committee next year.
Yep.
Right, and we've done some work toward a strategic plan that, you know, there's a couple of things you could workshop, so.
It seems like doing it.
Yeah.
Not like stacked then, maybe it would make sense doing one in July and having a month before the, the actual meetings.
What is, yeah. Trace, what's your summer?
Work? No, I don't, I don't really. Um, the first two weeks of July, I'm not gonna be working and I'm hoping not doing anything with anything.
Of July that runs into August. That's a good for me, but I'm putting it out there.
I could probably do earlier that week in a way, but second half of that week.
Like July twenty eighth?
Oh, sorry, that, like that last partial week there?
Yeah.
I'm not here the twenty eighth. This is not all need to hinge on me. My summer's a little wacky.
Well, I mean, we're already gonna be kind of not knowing if everybody will join anyway, because we have a vacant seat that has yet to be filled to be able to make sure.
Yeah, you could vote your, uh.
No, workshop day. Thank you though.
I think it is good to say when you're free. What, when are you?
I think I'm free the twenty ninth and thirtieth.
I'm free those days.
Do you know if those work for you, Sean? July twenty ninth through thirtieth? Are those looking for you?
I think that my husband is away that week. And that I won't have childcare.
That's not gonna work for you.
I would have to get back to you to share on them. We could roll with it. I can do my best.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
I'll bring Maggie and Maggie can babysit. Or just Maggie, Maddie and Andy. All right, which day? Tuesday or Wednesday? You guys gotta.
Oh, no, sorry. He says the twenty first to twenty fifth is when he's away.
So we're twenty ninth or thirtieth?
Yeah, so.
What? Are those dates free for you?
I can do the, I can do the week of the twenty eighth, whatever.
Either the twenty ninth or thirtieth are what we're looking at.
Either one.
All right. Have a preference? Let's do the twenty ninth. Seven twenty nine. Do you guys want it a little bit earlier since this is a workshop?
No.
Or a six o'clock works good. You like the dinnertime ones?
Much easier for me to do that.
Six o'clock? Okay, all right.
But.
Yeah, I'm still working till five.
And then are you gonna have the August fourth the next week?
Hold on a sec.
Okay.
Thank you though. Do we, so the, the July twenty ninth at six P M will be workshop. Do you want us to send, or can you guys send me what you think would be good agenda or topics that you'd want to sure, talk about ahead of time? That way then, as we create the agenda, we kind of have an idea of what you might already have for thoughts, and then Sean and I can work on if we need to pull together info ahead of time or whatever. Um, to help give us direction on goals and stuff, because sometimes we come up with goals that then we're like, this isn't even tangible. How do we even measure this? So we might be able to like look ahead of time at like, how would we measure certain ideas that we might already be percolating about. All right. And that would be at LCS. And then would two weeks later, the week of the eleventh. Although some of this is hard, because do the other board members?
Grab the eleventh, that's their usual.
Is the second Monday?
Appleton has been going back and forth between Wednesdays, but that's based on a couple of work schedules, so they have to have the conversation. So if you stay away from Wednesdays.
And Mondays.
Monday, the eleventh, you'll be all right.
If we could make the three towns, none of them meet in the same week, that would be huge as well.
In August, that might be near impossible when
When are they meeting?
We're trying to meet later to accommodate Justin having more time. But we can't really do it the last week of August, because then parents won't have time to necessarily get all the info.
Saying generally, in general, yeah.
I think all the rest of them would still stick with the first Monday of the month.
Well.
But I don't.
Appleton's been doing Wednesdays, so sometimes the office has two, two a week. That's all.
Near, not the twenty fifth, not that last week.
I would say we should do either the week of the, probably the week of the eighteenth. If that gives Justin enough time.
That was plenty of time. He'll be back by then.
And then also gives the parents time to know what the bus schedule is, know what the or the bus routes, be able to read the student handbook and all of that stuff.
Yeah, I like that.
So the Monday, the eighteenth is open?
That is open for the other schools.
Grab that date.
Eighteen. Yep, at six P M. And that will be like the first of the school year one. Last year, I know September first is the holiday, so we did it the day after to know how first day went, but we could, and I think because the second Monday must be Appleton or whatever school was, so do we want to do it September second or try to do it the week after?
Um, because Monday, the first is the holiday, you actually, the eighth is considered the first Monday of the month. So hope would go to the fifteenth. That's the way we do it when there's a Monday holiday here, so. I know September sometimes gets wacky, but.
But it's the first Monday is September first. The day after, right?
That's because I think Hope had already grabbed the date.
The Monday after, yeah. So do we want to do it on Tuesday? The second? Or the ninth?
Had requested not the first day of school.
I mean, it's a lot, right?
Yeah.
You want it Monday, the eighth, but is that?
Yes, you can grab the eighth.
Because they haven't grabbed it yet.
And other Monday holidays, Hope is used to you guys taking that the real first Monday of the month and then going down. It'll be it is in with, in keeping with what we've been doing.
All right, so nine, eight, at six P M. And then October sixth.
Well.
Six P M.
At the August meeting, you set the dates for the year, so I mean, you can, we could do it right now if you want to, but.
I would love to do it right now.
It's supposed to have a new person.
New person, yeah.
Are we changing from Mondays?
I'm not.
I know. That's what I'm saying, like.
Probably not. Probably whoever's been coming on understands that this historically been on the first Monday of the month. And they're, they're, they're okay with it, because they're running for the. But we can't a hundred percent make that assumption.
It's on the agenda for the August.
All right, so then we're scratching September eighth, and we're scratching October, September eighth, since that's not a September meet or a summer.
Yeah, I think we should hold the September.
I would grab the September.
Yeah, right?
Take over the meeting, because this is insanity right now. All right.
Think this is best, yeah.
No, it's fine. So we got September. I know, I'm ready to.
We have a lot of policies to go over.
I know, that's, yep. All right, let's just move on. Good. Good. The policies for second reading and adoption.
Okay, so the only policy we made a change to was we had a discussion about E E B B. Uh, after, um, we had a discussion here. Um, and I highlighted for you what I sent you, the sentence that we added to sort of answer the questions that came up here. So that is that we added to the second paragraph, we added, this policy applies only to volunteers who've been approved in writing by the superintendent for specific school business. Sort of to answer that question of there's a thunderstorm and parents are taking kids willy-nilly kind of thing, um, or the bus breaks down or whatever. And then, uh, so this basically states that that does not apply to those folks. And then, um, we added a reimbursement piece at the very end, just to add a sentence about the reimbursement, volunteers who've been approved by the superintendent may be eligible for reimbursement at the current business standard leverage rate. Um, those are the changes that we made, um, at, right, at the last policy subcommittee. We've made a long discussion about it.
Thank you.
The rest of them are, are not different. And then, so we had talked about them last month, but I'm happy to go through anything that needs to be clarified.
And we brought on them as a group or?
Yeah, as long as nobody feels like if they're gonna vote opposite to something, then we should do them line by line, but if everybody not that we can necessarily take a poll on a poll, but if everybody thinks that they're gonna vote collectively as a yes, then we can do them all as one.
I guess the question is, are you comfortable with the changes that are made?
I like the changes.
The good thing is they're always revisable anyway. Like, we get into a situation where something is happening that was unintended, we can just come back and.
Like parenting, you may not know which rules you have to make.
Make them all.
Thank you for laboring over.
Yes, yeah. We can take a motion if someone wants to.
I'll make a motion to approve policies.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say J J I F E G A D G S C A, G S C A R. J G A A, J G B P, G B P R, and E E B B. All in favor? I'm approving all of those for adoption. All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Next, eh, so I don't know if, I'm assuming Kate had let you all know, Justin is doing the walk down Camden with his son. So he's not here, but.
I do have his report, and so I can go through that. The Coombs Trust Committee, um, met on April fifteenth, um, to consider whether the grant would sponsor scholarships for former LCS students. Committee considered the balance of the trust, perceived market trends and high expensive college, university, and ultimately decided that the trust would offer ten scholarships in the amount of one thousand dollars for the C H R H S Scholarship Committee to award. The winners will be announced on June fourth at the scholarship night. That's amazing. Um, retirements, at the end of the year, we will say goodbye to respected and revered staff members, Lynn Clark. She's been a stalwart at tech for the past thirty-two years. She has ardently served our special needs students with a compassion, grace, and patience. Lincolnville and beyond owe her an enormous debt of gratitude, and she will be greatly missed. That is absolutely all true. And Michelle Prosser joined us last year and her impact was felt immediately. She also served our special needs population and in that role has demonstrated remarkable care and thoughtfulness. She has a gentle way with other humans that will be difficult to replace. Thank you both Lynn and Michelle for making, help making the school successful. Other staffing, um, updates is that her vote, the, both those positions have been posted and a full-time social worker position was posted as anticipated. Um, Justin asked that we set a meeting in June for ESCO hiring options, so we did that, and that respectfully submitted his report.
And the social worker position is anticipated, because we have to wait for the June.
Yes. Yes, because we have half of it in the budget currently, but we would need to have the whole thing voted on.
Any other questions? Not that Justin's here, but anything else? All right, moving on to superintendent's.
All right.
If the Coombs Grant, does that mean that the full amount of it went to the scholarship as opposed to our teacher request?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out.
I believe we've heard about teacher requests at some point this year. Oh, they've already been filled. I believe so. Thank you. Yes. So that's more than we have last year for the Coombs Trust.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, there was like no interest on it last year. It seemed like there wasn't really anything to.
We gave out, um, we gave out about five hundred last. We gave out a handful of five hundred scholarships, and we gave out the teacher requests, but it wasn't this amount. This is really.
It's always good when the market does well.
The year before, there was zero money. It's gonna do it.
Oh, that's what I was thinking about. That was two years ago. There was nothing, yeah.
Okay, uh, superintendent's report. Um, this is my last submission as the superintendent's school union sixty-nine in Lincolnville. Uh, so I thought I'd share some highlights, um. It's been a, a really, um, wonderful five years, um, and I've appreciated the trust and, uh, the opportunity you guys sent it to me, all the, all the opportunities. Um, and we did start together in relatively dark times, and, um, so we all kind of jumped in the pool together. And it went well, I think, given that we didn't know each other from Adam. Um, and now things are, are starting to really tick along. Um, so here's some highlights by the numbers. First of all, we completed, this is the whole school union, fifteen school budgets. The week twelve have been passed, three more will be deva- passed hopefully next, uh, week. Five central office budgets, eight collective bargaining agreements, two stellar principals hired, one business manager position created and filled with dedicated talented staff person. Who's not even here anymore. Forty policies reviewed, updated, corrected, and aligned with all three schools. Uh, secured fundings from over thirty grants, and that's not counting the COVID grants. Um, which provided services to our most vulnerable students. And then beyond the numbers, we reinstated how professional development opportunities for all three towns to meet together. Updated and enhanced the teacher administrative professional growth evaluate teacher and administrative professional growth and evaluation plan that hadn't been touched since twenty sixteen. Aligned the learning, expected learning outcomes also with the three schools. Those also hadn't been touched for almost a decade. Updated the curriculum review process, migrated to new finance software. Uh, expended, accounted for, and procured reimbursements for almost two million dollars in grants related to the pandemic. Increased nursing and mental health supports at all three schools, supported robust music and art opportunities, and in some cases were able to increase offerings to students. Provided new pre-K programming in Appleton and Lincolnville. Started specialized in-house special education programming that reduces costs out of district placements and allows students to remain in their neighborhood schools. We organized and refocused our business office practices to rebuild trust in the communities. Found office space every time, twice, that meets the needs of the office and was well below market value. And, um, we gained working understanding and built procedure and policy around a lot of new laws. There have been a ton of new laws, including laws around student discipline, bullying, Title Nine, earned pay leave, family leave, minimum salary expectations, and restraint and seclusion. So, um, I'm just saying I'm right in self-consciousness if you need anything, and that's, so respectfully submitted my last superintendent's report.
I know. Look at you, going off into retirement.
For a second time. Justin says I'm a serial retiree.
Thank you very much. Definitely got a lot done uh, in the last by five years, right? I still, I feel like you're abandoning me. Got one more left and that's all right. You said it was only gonna be five anyway.
You got a good replacement. And at the end, first meeting, you in Zoom, oh my God, we're in the gym with all of us. It's me socially distancing from Jared and Mike, who were the only ones that showed up. And then you on Zoom and Matt and.
Yeah, and then we were trying to be in the library of all of us together on Zoom and the computers were echoing off from each other and yeah, we've come a long way with technology as well. Well, thank you.
Yes. Thanks, Katie.
Thank you, bye. Alright, so our next meeting will either be the emergency meeting for discussing.
Oh.
That or will be a workshop, so. Do we want the items for the next meeting to be our next regular one in August, or do you want it to be for the next two?
You might set those in July, maybe set the.
During the workshop, do the, set the agenda for.
Think you need to. Re. Remar the workshop.
Yeah, it's just kind of a. Ideas to talk about, yeah. Alright. Then. Uh, agenda or German.
Oh, Emily.
Oh, in favor.
Favor at whatever time, eight fifteen. Punchy, I feel like, I'm like. I gotta go back and get more work done.